I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. They copy the Nebraska Means Act. They display on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilken.
Present.
Beck.
Here.
Camphret.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Mallor.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
This meeting is different than our, our normal meetings. We have, um, to finish up some, some old business and then we will then, um, adjourn and then reconvene and then we'll do the second meeting once we have, um, the new, um, well, when the mayor and then the council members will all be sworn in for that. So just explain why this agenda looks a little bit different than, than most. So first I have item, first item I have is the minutes, uh, consideration of approval of draft minutes of November twentieth, twenty eighteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Wilken.
And the other item I wanted to, to do, um, when we have outgoing council members, we always present them with a certificate of appreciation for their service. Uh, as we know, Dick Hans had passed away, um, and we wanted to still recognize him and so I'd asked, uh, with his brother-in-law's here, uh, Dick Myers, uh, to receive the certificate. But I just wanted to say a few words first. Uh, I've known Dick for quite a while. He was always, um, a good friend and a good council member. He's, he was somebody who, um, definitely cared about the community and he, uh, was very involved going back to serving in the army as well as more recently with the, a volunteer of the National Guard. He's always somebody who, uh, always had a smile and something kind to say. And somehow he knew more about what goes on in Seward than I ever did. But he was sure happy to let me know whenever I saw him at coffee or around town. So, but I just want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to get to know Dick, uh, as his role, cause if I were never mayor, I probably wouldn't have had that opportunity. So for that, I'm very thankful. So I'd like to present, Dick Myers. If you would please, I could present you with a certificate of appreciation presented to Richard Hans, council member, ward three, gray gears, a dedicated service to the city of Seward, Nebraska. So, that's our first meeting and so now I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, Wilken.
Now I'll call the second meeting to order. Do you all call?
Do we need to? We have any matter?
Right, so please call the roll.
Uh, Wilken.
How's it?
Beck.
Here.
Camphret.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Mallor.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
And now we'll go through the reorganization and seating of, uh, new council member and myself.
We'll administer the oath of office. We start with Mayor Eichmeyer. You would be, raise your right hand. Do you, Joshua Eichmeyer solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies foreign and domestic, that you will bear truth, true faith and allegiance to the same? That you take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion? That you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Seward, Nebraska according to law and to the best of your ability? And do you further swear that you do not advocate nor are a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? And that during such time as you are in this position, you will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? So help you God.
I do.
Now we'll have the swearing in of the four newly elected council members. If you please stand, council member Ellen Beck, council member Sid Camphret, council member Alyssa Hendricks, and council member Carl Miller. You please raise your right hand and we'll have your swearing in. Do you, Ellen Beck, Sid Camphret, Alyssa Hendricks, Carl Miller solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same? That you take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for a purpose of evasion? That you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of each ward in which you represent for the city of Seward, Nebraska according to law and to the best of your ability? And do you further swear that you do not advocate nor are a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? And that during such time as you are in this position, you will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Okay. Now we have some, uh, appointments of city officials. Oh. Yes.
So item number two, this is a confirmation of mayor's appointments of city officials and council members to committees. Um, we have, Kelly, what's the best way to do this? Just go by letter or do we just want ones?
I think we can do them all at once or do more separately.
Okay, we'll just do these all at once then and if anybody wanted to pull one out, you always have to write as a council member to pull one out, then you can do it separately. So seeing no one requesting that at this time, then I'll go through. We have Bonnie Ott, uh, deputy clerk administrative assistant, titled assistant administrator, clerk, treasurer, budget, HR director. Greg Butcher, city administrator. Larry Ruther, light commissioner, titled electric and power resource director. Tim Richdick, water, wastewater superintendent, titled water, wastewater director. Alan Baldwin, chief of police. Brian Peters, assistant chief of police. Marilyn Varner, deputy city clerk, deputy treasurer, titled deputy clerk, finance director, assistant treasurer. Melvin Aldrich, public work superintendent, titled street transportation and recycling superintendent. Becky Baker, library director. Ed Gonzalez, building inspector, purchasing agent, mechanical inspector, titled building, zoning and code enforcement director. Nicholas Wolfe, city treasurer, titled finance director slash treasurer. Jake Vassa, city engineer. Bob Core, recreation director, titled parks, recreation, cemetery, golf director. Kelly Hofschneider, city attorney, and James Kimsey, fire chief. Those are the appointments. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
We'll do the oaths now. Do you, Bonnie Ott, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same? That you will take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion? That you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of city clerk, administrative assistant for the city of Seward, Nebraska according to the law, to the best of your ability? And do you further swear that you do not advocate nor are a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? And that during such time as you are in this position, you will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? So help you God.
So we have the appointments of the remaining city officials. So if you please stand, we have city minister, Brad O'Grady Butcher, Larry Ruther, Tim Richdick, Alan Baldwin, Brian Peters, Marilyn Varner, Melvin Aldrich, Becky Baker, Ed Gonzalez, Nicholas Wolfe, Jake Vassa, and Bob Core. Uh, city attorney Kelly Hofschneider and fire chief James Kim. There are a few people who couldn't make it come right, but. Hey, if you please raise your right hand. Do you, names listed, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska against all enemies foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same? That you take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion? That you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office you are appointed to for the city of Seward, Nebraska according to law and to the best of your ability? And do you further swear that you do not advocate nor are a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? And that during such time as you are in this position, that you will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence? So help you God. Thank you.
Next we have the confirmation of appointment of city council members to city boards and committees. These are the liaison appointments. We have to the fire department, John Singleton, to the cemetery board, Sid Camphret, to the tree board, Dean Fritz, to the park and recreation board, Ellen Beck and Chris Schmidt, to the civic senate commission, Sid Camphret and John Singleton, to the planning commission, Chris Schmidt and Sid Camphret, and to the library board, Jonathan Wilken and Alyssa Hendricks. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
Next we have appointment to boards and committees. We have personnel finance audit committee and that will be Ellen Beck, Carl Miller, Chris Schmidt, and Jonathan Wilken. To the E and N one board, we have Dean Fritz and John Singleton. To the CUPG application review board for economic development program loan reuse, we have Jonathan Wilken and Alyssa Hendricks. To the Seward Celine County Solid Waste Agency, we have John Singleton. Seward Foundation is Dean Fritz and Carl Miller. Seward Aging Services Commission is Alyssa Hendricks. LBA forty Sales Tax Application Review Board for Economic Development is Ellen Beck and Carl Miller. Rail Campus Development Review Committee is Chris Schmidt and Carl Miller. Someone like to make a motion?
Will you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
And then we also have the confirmation of mayor's appointments to various boards and committees. We have the reappointment of Justin Hartman to the park and recreation board for a three-year term. The reappointment of Justin Hartman to the citizen advisory review committee. This is the economic development plan for a three-year term. The reappointment of Jeremy Tunnies and Jessica Colterman to the LBA forty Sales Tax Application Review Board for Economic Development for a three-year term. And the reappointment of Jonathan Jank to the rail campus development review committee for a two-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
And next we'll do the election of council president. Kelly, remind me, do we, in the past, we have someone nominate and then, is that how we run this?
Opening nominations.
So we're going to open the nominations, is someone like to nominate themselves or someone else, is either way is appropriate?
I'd like to nominate Chris Schmidt.
We have a nomination of Chris Schmidt. Anyone else like to make a nomination? Seeing no one else, do you unanimous consent on this or do you want to do an actual ballot?
So you can close the nominations, you can just do a, uh, a motion for approval if you want to do it that way.
Okay, so close the nominations unless anyone else has someone in mind and then go ahead and, um, make a, entertain a motion to, well, I'm sorry, to approve or? Okay, so.
Will you approve?
Is your second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
Save this paper. Uh, and next we have the consent agenda, items five, six, and seven.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
In favor, welcome back, campus Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, Wilken.
Next we have a public hearing, item number eight. This is a public hearing at seven PM, consideration of a resolution amending the redevelopment plan, declaring an area northwest corner of Lincoln Street and North Columbia Avenue described as lots one, two, three, and four, dual subdivisions, city of Seward, as substandard and blighted and in need of development. Uh, Ed, you're here to lead us off on this.
Good evening, council. Thank you. This is a new blight and substandard study, uh, which was conducted by planning and design firm RDG on four parcels at the northwest corner of Lincoln Street and North Columbia Avenue. The addresses are eight Lincoln Street, thirty-four Lincoln Street, six twenty-five North Columbia, and six forty-five North Columbia. The notice of public hearing was published in the Seward County Independent, November twenty-first, November twenty-eighth, and then the Lincoln Journal Star, November sixteenth and November twentieth. The notice was also sent via certified mail to all local political subdivisions, including Seward County Commissioner, Southeast Community College, ESU Unit Six, Upper Big Blue NRD, and the Seward School District. The planning commission met last night and recommended approval by unanimous vote, uh, of both, the designation of an area as blighted and substandard and an amendment to the redevelopment plan to add the blighted and substandard area.
Thanks, again, um, and I'll just kind of repeat what was stated last night at the planning commission by the, the chair. I'm not quite as eloquent as Ron is, but Ron did a pretty good job of, of explaining that this item before us tonight has to do with updating the, uh, the, the blight and substandard map, also referred to commonly as the, uh, the TIFF map, because in order to entertain an application for TIFF, it needs property, needs to fall within, um, that part of the map. And so we've done this before in the past, but, um, just wanted to make sure everyone knew that that was, that that's the focus of, of tonight's discussion, whether there are projects that are, would be considered at some point, those would be considered at some point down the road. Did, um, is, is Mr. Willis here? Did you want to come up next or first before he goes? Did you have any questions for Ed? And we'll have Mr. Willis go and then we'll open it up to public comment on the public hearing.
I have a question just as far as your comment. I did not make it last night to planning commission, I had parental duties. So, I, I mean, I understand it was before us as far as whether we're going to designate this as blighted area or not, but the reality behind it is, it's coming to us because of a project. Without that project, we as a city would not have been going out blighting this. So ignoring what drove the process, I, I think is wrong. And not allowing comment, because that's what drove the whole blight piece.
Right, and I'm not saying that that one wouldn't be prudent for discussion, it's just that this, in order to even have that discussion, um, I think the point that Ron made last night and I would agree with him was that the item before us is whether or not to update the map. You can update this map, it's still not going forward with any project. There, we already have, um, I can, what's the percentage? We have up to thirty-five percent of the community on a map like this. Smaller communities can even do a hundred percent, like a village, they, oftentimes they just blight the entire town, because that, when the projects come up, they don't have to have this discussion every time, they can just go ahead with the application and decide on the merits. Um, as far as this particular item, yes, this was a request by somebody to, by Thomas who's here tonight, to consider these properties for the TIFF map and I believe his hope is or intent would be if that goes forward, that he would then apply. But that discussion will still take place at that time. And so whether it's through the planning commission, the TIFF board, which is also the CRA board, and then eventually it would come back to the council. Um, but that was the, the point that I think Ron made last night and I was trying to make tonight was that we have plenty of time to discuss that, because a vote on this tonight doesn't mean any project goes forward. It just allows the person who, who is wanting to consider that to make an application. And that, so I guess that would be my only distinction from that, what you said.
Well, and, and I agree with you, but I don't want anything to be misleading.
No, I don't either. What would, what would be, I guess I don't understand what would be misleading.
Well, there's, there's a project behind it, Josh, and let's say the blight goes through tonight, so now our developer starts working through the process and then when it gets to the actual TIFF application, it gets denied. So that's why, since it, I mean, since it's unique from the standpoint it was brought forward by the developer, I think it's important that it's all considered.
Well, and, and I think I've discussed this with Thomas as well, I mean, he understands the risk of moving forward. I think the reason why, um, as far as doing this at this time was, um, not to put him in a position where he has to incur even more expenses and then all of a sudden tonight, um, it, it doesn't happen. So with development, we've dealt with this with other economic developments, there's always a chicken and the egg of who goes first and who's going to pay for what and, and this is, can sometimes be a, a bit of a dance. And so I, um, I don't mean to mislead anyone here tonight, so if you have any questions, you feel free to ask. Um, is there any other questions for Ed at this time? Otherwise I would have Mr. Willis come forward and, and present, and then like I said, we'll open it up to the public for a public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Eichmeyer, council members. Andrew Willis, Klein Williams, uh, CRA council for the city. So I, I think that lead-in was important, uh, essentially tonight we're looking at , uh, the first two proposed actions that would eventually lead to something else, but, but tonight the, the, the recommendation from planning commission and the proposal in front of you would be to declare this area blighted and substandard and then to add that new blighted and substandard area to the existing redevelopment plan. Um, as you know, the next steps would ultimately be if there is the project, that it would, it would then come to be an amendment to the redevelopment plan for that project, specific project. That would go back through planning commission and then back to this council. Um, that would have the, the typical items you see with the, the projects, which is the redevelopment plan amendment, the cost benefit analysis, and the actual redevelopment agreement. So, uh, if, if, if this board should, should approve the actions tonight, um, that anything dealing with this specific project would come back before you. So, so again, starting off, what, what we're really looking at tonight is the blight and substandard study that RDG, uh, planning put together and to declare this as the area blighted and substandard. There's, there's, the two definitions of blighted and substandard, they're overlapped, they're distinct, they must both be met, but they're pretty similar. I guess I'd start off with a couple of bigger, bigger items, we're looking at a, a new blight and substandard area like this. Um, as Mayor Eichmeyer said, I mean, the main limitation for the city is there's a thirty-five percent cap over the entire, uh, city limits. Right now, it's at nineteen point five percent, nineteen point five-six percent, so, and this is a small area, so if approved, it would, you'd be up to nineteen point six-two percent. So from the, from the cap perspective, um, you're well under, but that's, it's, it's a small area, so it's not adding a lot of actual area. Um, that thirty-five percent cap is really the, the, the main statutory check on what is, how much is blighted and substandard, and we'll get to the definitions here in a second. Um, one of the questions that was raised at the planning commission meeting, and again, it was, it was approved and recommended for approval, but just one of the questions that was raised was, uh, the size of this area versus the size of other areas. And this is, and, and it goes, I guess, along with the idea of who brought it or how it was brought. Um, and this is fairly typical, I would say, in, in communities, is you have, as Seward do you, you first have your initial blight declaration, your initial redevelopment plan made, and then as time goes on, uh, based on how things move and what happens in the city and the community, uh, you, you either shift that area or add more to it and this will be the second time the area has been added to the overall redevelopment area if it's approved. Um, and that's, and it's, and this often happens, if, if a project comes, I guess I would say it's not, it's not an unusual process to see it. Um, somebody said, hey, this is an area that's, we could do something in, but we can't, you know, really, and so look at that blight designation kind of driven by a project. So it's, um, I guess I would just start off by saying it, this, this would not be a unique process over, throughout the state. Um, and again, with the size as well, there, that's, there's no limitation on, on size. Really, there's a, there's an expectation when you're, when you're looking at a blight and substandard declaration, that there's a, a general uniformity of blight and substandard conditions. So where you may run into problems would be you, I mean, sort of like a gerrymandering where you've got some blighted conditions and then you add in a large, maybe like a, you know, loop to get to some other area, and then you have the blighted conditions, but it's not really uniform. That's not what's happening here, obviously, this is a small concentrated area, so, um, from a size perspective, there's no, there's no legal impediments, no issues at all. In fact, some, some cities do these smaller areas a lot and call them micro-blighted areas.
Just so we're clear, does not, I mean, you talk about uniform and I think people kind of confuse that, the, the complete blighted area or the thirty percent in our case, what will be close to twenty percent, doesn't have to be uniform.
Correct, yes. Relatively uniform, and, and so, yeah, there's always going to be areas within that blighted area that, um, you know, one project, one property may not be, it, it, it looks at the entire area, but it's more of a relative uniformity, and the idea is you have, I don't know, you, you pick six blocks and, and really all the blights on block one and then you have five nice blocks. And that's the kind of thing they're trying to avoid with uniformity, but correct, there's, it's not a universal, uh, blight and substandard. So, um, just as kind of overlooking this, overlooking this plan, this, the study that's in front of you, um, that's kind of big picture what we're looking at, um, from a, from the community development on perspective. Um, so I, I guess it's also probably worth noting as, as we look at a new blighted and substandard area, those are statutory terms of art, um, it's not a, it's not a judgment on the area other than the fact that it meets that statutory definition. A few years ago, there was a proposed change in the terminology from blighted. I'm not sure why the legislature didn't make that change, it felt like they didn't need to, I mean, you could call it a designated redevelopment area and have the same criteria and it wouldn't have that connotation, but that, but I'm not in charge of that, I'm just, uh, you know, looking at the definition. So, um, you know, again, it, it's, it's really just meeting these statutory definitions that we're going to talk about and that we're really, and discussed in the study. Um, so again, there's, there's two definitions that are very similar, blight and substandard. The blighted definition, it has a, it has an objective category and a subjective category. So you have to, you have to essentially check one of the boxes in the objective category, you have to just meet one of those, those five criteria. And then in the subjective category, you look at the overall area, the overall conditions, there's not a mathematical equation, it's just looking at the, the general, uh, overall area and making sure it meet, and it has a substantial predominance or it meets, it has enough of those conditions that you, that you feel that it needs to be, the declarations acceptable. It's just an overall, again, subjective criteria. So, and then, and then the substandard definition is very similar to that subjective category, it really focuses more on the buildings than the overall area, there's some blighted conditions that involve the overall plating and planning and other conditions, and the substandard is really focused on the buildings. Um, in the study, there's, it, it concludes that on the objective criteria, there's like two boxes checked, so we meet two of those objective criterias on this proposed area. Uh, the decreasing population in that census tract and then the ages of the building, and that's the one I wanted to focus on. Um, in the, in the definition of blight, if the average age of all the buildings, either non-residential or residential buildings, is over forty years of age in that area, then that's, that is called, it's blight. It doesn't matter if those are nice buildings or not, that just meets the definition. Here across the census tract, uh, the average age was ninety point two years, the four buildings in the actual study, the average age is sixty-three years. So we, we, again, we just check that box and then meet that objective criteria. Um, then we look at subjective categories and, and again, they're laid out in that study, the, the RDG really broke it out into eleven categories of those eleven. Of those eleven categories of the of the blight definition, the subjective blight definition. They said there there was a substantial presence of four of those not of five and then two that really they didn't look at and weren't applicable. Again that's probably not the right way to look at this because we're not looking at a mathematical equation we don't have to hit fifty percent of those categories we just look at the overall. Overall conditions of everything if you have one of those and it's and we feel like it meets that substantially then that's all you would need. Uh in this case they really looked at they really focused on the the uh the number of the deteriorating structures three out of four of those buildings in that area. Have been cited for multiple issues one one condemnation notice a lot noted in the study a lot of unsafe conditions. And those multiple citations and issues there. I can go into those more if you want to but essentially what that's what through that through the study it shows that and and the conclusion is. That that there is a substantial presence of the substandard conditions enough to meet that subjective test. Um so uh between that subjective test and we've checked our box on the objective test we meet the definition of the legal definition of blight in this for this study area. The subj- the substandard criteria again is very similar to that blighted subjective criteria really focusing on the buildings. In this case that's really what the they focused on anyway the age and obsolescence of the buildings so you're getting you got sixty three year old. Buildings the average age they've got the multiple citations and violations and some and some health and safety concerns. Uh they they included you know unsafe heating furnaces the gases turned off foundation cracks. Allowing you know road inhabitation structural issues that affect the affect the integrity of those four buildings or the or the predominance of those four buildings not all of them but. Again you're looking at the overall overall condition of of the of just looking at all those four buildings together um and again the study. Says well yes there is a substantial presence three out of four of those buildings really meet these these criteria and so uh the conclusion of the study is. That it meets the definition of substandard as well so overall I I guess I would I would say. Uh you know this this study sufficiently supports a declaration of blighted and substandard for this for this proposed area under the Nebraska Community Development Law. Um it it meets the definition and supports it. Assuming that's the case the next thing that we do is we add the council would add. That blighted and substandard area to the redevelopment to the overall redevelopment area. Under under Nebraska law in order to add an area in a new a new area to the existing redevelopment area. Uh either has to be declared blighted and substandard on its own or the additional land must be reasonably necessary to accomplish the implementation of existing plan. In this case assuming that you approve this blighted and substandard study it meets that definition on its own so. So that really uh you know again is from from a legal perspective that that's what's necessary in order to add this area to that plan. I think effectively that's what needs to be said for tonight I I guess I would I would note I just just because I know where it's what's going I think I would note a couple of things. You know that under the state under the community development law it's this this blighted and substandard. Uh definition particular is for both residential and non residential areas and it does and size wise again it doesn't really matter. From from a project perspective and I know we're not talking about the project at all but um you know the the the. I do a lot of I do a lot of work across the state and and we do a lot of. Residential areas like this and redevelopment in residential areas this the the legislature this year just passed a new law LB four ninety six. To really even push TIF more towards the ability to use it for workforce housing. I think but again that's probably getting ahead of ourselves anyway really tonight all we're looking at is. Is this area blighted and substandard or do you want this to be declared blighted and substandard and added to the redevelopment area? And with that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Andrew any question from the council yes.
So you just said this LB four ninety six we've just brought into. This as now we're starting to bring residential into blight expectation.
Well it's always been you've always been able to declare an area blighted again the the that's the piece we're doing tonight is really not changed you can always declare the. Like for example when they talk about blighted the age of buildings it specifically says either residential or non residential it talks about that. Um it's really on the use side in the redevelopment use. Now we've we've done I've done a lot of redevelopment projects a lot of subdivisions in housing. I spent most of today working on an apartment complex it's a redevelopment project in a different city um and these are I mean it's a pretty typical use and across the state. Housing being a major issue it's it's very common what what LB four ninety six did was it specifically added. Some ability to use TIF for really vertical construction of workforce housing again probably. Not relevant to what we're talking about tonight however it. The point I guess I was just trying to emphasize is that uh. The legislature is really making this more of a tool for residential use as well.
Thank you any other yes Sid.
Andrew this this project that we're not talking about is uh developer driven from my understanding. And just in your experience and this is a hypothetical say that it was being driven by the current owner. Could they do the same thing in other words where I'm going with this is either now or in the future. Could a current landlord or owner of a residential property. Whose property has been allowed to fall into this repair which would qualify as blighted. Can they then sell then commission a blight study and come before us have it blighted? And and then get TIF money?
Well they certainly could I mean the the blighted and substandard process the the declaration process is really. It's you 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 have your blight study they could commission anybody could commission a blight study and bring and propose it now. The council could not choose not to add that area and then. Secondarily even if that area was added again really the the only the only major limitation being that thirty five percent cap in this of of city area. But again if that property was added to the blighted to the redevelopment area because it felt like it was blighted then. You again the project would still have to come forward so maybe. Council would not see that as an appropriate project or some or or something else but but presumably I mean you would. Anybody could try to get an area declared blighted and it would really just be in in your purview as a council.
So once we would add say that that this project or area would get added it would bring us to like nineteen point six percent.
Little like twenty percent yeah.
Say that it moves along and then it does not get approved. Does that area forever take a bite out of that thirty five percent?
Your area remains the same until at any point you can also de-blight an area and we've done and. We typically see this in communities and there's two reasons really um I mean it's really driven by that cap usually so you're getting close to thirty five percent. And what communities often do is is. De-blight or de-designate that blighted area for one of two reasons one is. You've had several redevelopment projects and it's been twenty years and that area has you you it's achieved its purpose and in that case you say okay we wanna. We've we've done well here we don't need that designation anymore we're gonna put it somewhere else maybe you know again if that's twenty years later. Your average age of buildings has switched around that's one um one we've done recently was. Um in another community they had a large redevelopment area and then were up against their cap but realized just based on how the town had developed. That there just really wasn't gonna be I mean there there was just some physical you know landscaping you know you know topography issues in that area wasn't ever going to be developed. So they said well we don't see that as a beneficial piece as the blight and substandard because we're just not gonna use it anymore and then they de-blighted that and moved it somewhere else. And that's all just driven by council at any time but. Otherwise it stays indefinitely.
Chris.
Stay after my question about.
Oh.
Under L I D or whatever.
Ellen.
In your experience professional knowledge how often has it come across. Your desk or that you know that an individual homeowner has used this process to get TIF. Uh financing to to their own property.
I I guess I'm. I mean not I'm fairly often it 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 happens as far as the the like a actual property owner has has a project I mean it may be. I guess it just I mean it's it certainly is not the this is not I mean. I'm not sure that's the case but I and I I honestly I don't know that much about the project that that we're not talking about I don't know that much about it but. Um just from a so for example a lot of projects yeah you have a property owner who owns who owns land. And they want to develop it and they have a great idea but again because of all those conditions they just can't do it and so yeah they'll they'll bring that and they'll propose the blighted and substandard study. We've seen that I'm working on a project with a developer in Lincoln and that's kind of their goal they're putting a blight study forward on property they own in order to.
And I'm talking about a developer as as a corporate company.
Okay.
I'm talking as just if I my husband and I decided to do that for our property just an individual homeowner without any.
The 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 major limitation there would be when you came with a project as far I mean. I I'm not sure what the TIF uses would be I mean again that's sort of down the line the as far as blighting the area again I think if you if if the area met the conditions. And that was the area that the council or the you know planning commission recommended the council saw to put forward there'd be nothing stopping. Nothing stopping you you there's no limitation of what you where you declare blighted and what you do is accept that thirty five percent cap so somebody could bring that forward if you thought that was right now. That you know the idea of one owner having a residential home and using TIF to renovate is. Is unlikely for different reasons and that has to do with the the way TIF the the eligible uses and and sources of TIF.
Anyone from the council? Not and we'll go ahead and thank you Andrew and we're gonna open up the public comment portion of the public. Hearing so then we'll go public wishes to comment on this item. Please come to the podium there is a signing sheet up there and that's just to make sure we get it being spelled right for the clerk's record. And then you know it'll be five minutes unless you're asked questions and that goes on as long as you get asked questions and you wanna answer them. So anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone can come forward if you like. Yes welcome.
Thank you. I don't know oh my name is Hoven Wolf I live at four two two north first I don't know if I should be insulted. Or if I should be enlightened or if if I should be scared. Because when a consultant says that we are in a neighborhood that's blighted I live in a blighted house I am a blighted person. And um that's the kind of thing that kind of makes me uncomfortable if the city goes forth. Excuse me if the city goes forth do we set a precedent? I have almost forty homes or buildings that I've rehabbed or renovated or taken from HUD and brought them in. I would condemn any house that is beyond. The point where it needs to go but my concern would be what precedent do do we send? To the community in doing an individual or a block. Um I guess that would be the only thing that I would caution you because as I deliver meals on wheels and I go through town. I see many many areas and one of the things that. I guess I'm familiar with the home that you're redoing and from the old cattle house that I did and. Some of the other commercial buildings that I've done we need to do something is this the time is this the property or do we need to step back and say. Where does this fit into the scheme of using these funds and using this process for blighting a neighborhood? So that's all I have to say.
Any questions? Saying none thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
I have one more question I should have asked it of a consultant. What precludes a historic property such as Langworthy House which is part of this? Does that preclude it from I I don't think it's ever been a historic property but. What if you take one of the historic properties and do something else with it under another guise of redevelopment or TIF money or whatever? And I don't know what historic I mean that's one of the things that I've been asked in in the neighborhood is.
Right and as far as the the use would be um that would be the discussion um if there's a TIF application that comes forward. That lays out what exactly the project would be as far as designating it as a as part of the blighted and substandard. Area um that can I don't think there's any restriction Andrew if I'm correct me if I'm wrong but I'm not aware of any. Restriction as far as properties that would be excluded from that. Unless I guess. Andrew welcome. The question had to do with one of the homes being a historic nature okay is there I don't know could you answer that?
Yeah and and I think can I maybe take a few minutes and and so. The idea of a historic home so first of all again the the blighted and substandard. Declaration and the idea you put an area into the redevelopment area it does not affect your property. It does not affect any use of your property it's it's an overlaid designation so. So starting you know starting at that point um. What the the proposed resolution like would not change any possible use would not change any designation at all so so. Uh you know if a property is historic it it just it wouldn't affect that it doesn't affect. It it ma- it makes it makes no effect on the property at all so start you know from a from just the being in a redevelopment area so starting there. Um I guess the second piece is maybe on any project at all. Whether it's commercial residential historic building anything um. Tax income financing itself it really is it's using the increase in and again so this is maybe TIF one on one but you're using the increase in valuation from whatever project is done. And that increase in valuation is used to pay for eligible public improvements and so those eligible costs are things that are things that are declared under the statute as eligible. The typical examples are streets utilities anything like that. Uh but it can be anything with an eligible purpose again again one of the one of the the. That we've always had as a TIF eligible purpose but the legislature this year in that it changed the community development law to make it very clear that it is is all those. Enhancements above code so facade facade enhancements anything above code because that's again the idea is you're. Beautifying the area the aesthetics that are going to decrease blighted and substandard conditions that's now part of the statute energy efficiency. The idea that you're creating more energy efficient building decreasing the load on a city that that's considered an eligible public purpose so. There but but again these are things that are defined under statute so those are the only things TIF can be used for. Now past that so that I guess that's sort of the the big picture of when a project comes. You have to both have an increase in valuation because otherwise you don't have any TIF dollars at all. Um and then you have to have eligible uses as part of that project so whatever any project may be and that's why you know so that that that's sort of your basic starting spot. So then as far as historic properties um you know something on the historic register or maybe not or whatever that is that really that really is. A totally different I mean a totally different um scenario at all. Um there's I mean they're they you could you could use TIF as part of a renovation of the historic building. You but it wouldn't but those are two different categories I mean and that's really what it comes down to so it. TIF itself doesn't have any effect on your your historic regis- your registry or anything like that. Um you you could and I've seen it done where you you're using maybe some historic tax credits and TIF at the same time to do a big renovation but it. But there but there are two different paths to get to the same thing.
And but to her point though I mean there is always been a stigma with the glided and substandard. Uh language and there's been like you mentioned in legislature they've talked about trying to. Not give it that use different words because of that stigma if I remember right. Going back a few years there was a pretty famous one in Omaha that had to do with uh was it Warren Buffett's neighborhood? Uh and that area and they Omaha did a blight study where they added part of it in there and rightly. It was if people didn't understand what the TIF process was or what the blight study was and they freaked out I mean they like you said they were. My house is you know a really nice house why am I in this blight study and so that's been sort of the. The back and forth of I would just assume call it like a TIF redevelopment area and Chris and I have talked about. That unfortunately or fortunately we're not in legislature so we don't have have to worry about that um. But maybe there's someone here who who is that can fix that for us somehow.
I I yeah I would agree I would I would like the language be changed the the once so. Again part of that there is a there is sort of a visceral reaction when when to this term blighted. But when an area is declared blighted it again outside of this designation in this hearing. You know as far as trying to sell your property people are concerned well I now have a blighted I live in a blighted neighborhood that is not a. It 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 has no affecting your property values it has there's no it's not even like I mean. You can go look to the at at city hall and find that TIF map but other than that it 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 just has it doesn't do anything else.
Well it it typically like when we first did this about I want to say six or seven years ago and we started. Moving forward with TIF application. Well, and typically, like when we first did this about, I want to say six or seven years ago, and we started moving forward with TIF applications, you know, had that initial TIF map, you know, you typically focus on commercial areas, uh, or industrial areas, and so like the downtown and other places, but I don't think anyone here would say, well, the downtown courthouse square is this eyesore. It's just that we needed to designate an area, so if someone within that area wanted to do a project, they'd already be qualified as far as being on the map, and they could then go forward with the application. As opposed to every time you wanted a building, you'd have to go back and have the expense of adding that building to the blight map, and then you could start the application process. This one is just different, because it's the first one we've done, which primarily residential houses. And I think it's catching people off guard, and, and all the hypotheticals start swirling around, like, well, my house, is my house on the map somewhere? And I think a lot of people might be surprised, uh, which properties are actually on that map, but it's strictly for redevelopment purposes. And, and like you said, it's not a guarantee that anything's going to happen, it just simply allows the person within that map to apply.
Downtown's a great example, because most communities have blighted downtowns, because that's, again, an area where you want to, that, that you may as a community want to see redeveloped. You could have beautiful old buildings, and again, age is part of it. So if, if the average age is over forty years old, you're halfway to becoming blighted and substandard already. And so you could have beautiful buildings that are very small footprints, like lots are very small, because at the time, uh, you know, fifty years ago, they had smaller buildings. So part of the blighted conditions is, is just inadequate lot sizes compared to modern development. So, so again, you could have thriving downtown, all very small buildings that are close together, and maybe there's, you know, not inadequate alley behind, you know, pick your scenario. But you, but you could have a thriving full downtown, and it could be blighted and substandard, because again, you've met your age, maybe there, you know, could be something as simple as lot layouts, they're not even, they, they use the word inadequate, but it's not that they're inadequate for the purpose they're being used for, it's that looking at modern development, if somebody was going to come in and do something, you would really need to acquire four of those to build a bigger building. And so again, yeah, the, the, the terminology might be the unfortunate part, because you could have a, the downtown's probably a good example, where you can have a thriving, beautiful downtown, and it's blighted and substandard just by legal definition.
Do we have a current blight map that's available to show now?
Do we have it with us?
I don't have it.
Do you have it, Ed? Can you bring one out for us? It's online, I believe.
Is there a way to determine, because there are residents?
Yeah, yeah.
That are in that, that first one, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on, Gary, we're going to get to the public comment here in a second.
Who's going to answer the question?
Which question?
Just do a description of what the blighted area looks like.
Well, we're going to have a map here in a second, I think Ed's going to pull it out, so everyone can see the same thing. Um, so we all on the same page, but yeah, um, and, um, and I believe, oh, there you go. You have to huddle around my desk.
Ed, can you bring it up on your computer over here?
On the corner.
Try, yeah, we can open it.
By the way, do you want to just pass it around so everyone kind of knows? It's primarily the downtown, and then the corridor going south on Highway fifteen, just because those were where we had initially envisioned there would be commercial developments. Because that was primarily our focus historically. Uh, some communities have much, uh, a much more, a dire need for housing rehab and housing redevelopments than, than we do. Uh, and so, um, historically, we haven't, this wasn't really part of our conversation, I guess, if you will. But, um, and we can pass that through the audience as well, um, but that's basically what we're talking about.
I'll give you a couple, just a couple more examples, um, so in, in different communities. And again, I represent probably thirty-five to forty communities, I was going to say thirty-five, you're probably a good guess. And so, we do a lot of different projects, and in the last few years in particular, we've done a lot of residential projects, just because of the need for housing in a lot of communities. And so, that looks different in each community, sometimes it's a, it's a development of a subdivision. Uh, sometimes it's a, it may be a plan put in place by the community, where you, again, you've got a blighted area and you designate what that is, and then you're, you're, and, and one, so for example, one of the eligible uses is demolition. So if you have some, some condemned houses, uh, you can demo it, and that's, that, that part's. Now, now, because of the LB four ninety-six, you can actually, you know, with some bigger issues that we don't need to talk about, you can actually do vertical constructions for some workforce housing, but even, even without that bill, you could go demo a residential house, and somebody could rebuild a new one, and, I mean, that is a eligible project. And so, um, some, some communities have done that, where they're really looking at, okay, so we're, we, we're, you know, there's a vital need for housing, and how can we do that? Well, we can put a, our, our overall housing plan, where a lot of times it might be like, for example, the Economic Development Corporation, or somebody going and buying and demoing, getting some lots, you know, site ready. But again, those are all eligible projects. And sometimes it may be, we're going to build twelve, twelve homes or a, or a, you know, twelve flats, whatever it is. But, but sometimes it can be, I mean, again, sort of looking at, we have an area designed, and then we're going to demo this one and demo that one, and, and work, work our housing stock back up that way, and, and that works as well.
Thank you, Andrew, Ellen?
It's my understanding though, that TIF is not designed to be the major funding source for any project.
It never is, because, the, again, the way TIF works is, the increment, so basically you take your base value, whatever that property is assessed at, and then the incremental value, so if you have a, um, the, let's use, let's say you have a bear lot. So there's, there's already a bear lot, and it's a ten thousand dollar valued lot. And then you're going to go build, and since we're talking about housing, we'll say you're going to build a house on it. And you then build a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house. So what, you, the amount of TIF is generated by a hundred and seventy-five minus ten thousand, so it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And somebody better have math, and I should pick a better number to do easy math in my head, two percent of that, you know, your levy, um, that, that's the amount of dollars that are there. So it, it will never, TIF won't finance a project, it's really a gap financing, and, and the idea is, well, we've got quite a bit of financing, but there's, you know, some, some additional costs because of this, uh, and, and, and it's really a gap filler for that last little, little bit of it. So it, it never, I mean, because of the way TIF works, you'll never finance a project with it. It's really a very small, it's kind of that last hurdle to get a project going.
Well, and to be fair, I mean, part of that is also with the but for aspect of TIF, is that, the idea is that, you know, but for TIF, um, this developer went, not only this, but I mean, hypothetically, the developer wouldn't do the project.
Correct.
And so, the idea is not that it would cover most of the cost, it's that it would cover enough costs to make the project worth doing. And that's why the eligible expenses on that side is also a consideration. So, the increment would dictate how much of the TIF financing you would receive, but then the actual expenses, if there aren't that much eligible expenses, they can only spend up to that limit. Um, and so that depends on, on those two factors, um, working out, and, and what that looks like.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, for, for, for easier math that I can actually do. So if you had a hundred thousand dollars in increment, again, on the small house, you've got two thousand dollars of TIF per year. There's a fifteen-year limit on that, so that would be thirty thousand dollars. But again, the way all these projects go is, that developer then goes, it gets a bank loan, so you have to figure out the interest. So you're probably talking, we'll call that, by the time you're, you're repaying a loan with TIF, so it's twenty thousand dollars. So then you have twenty thousand dollars that are, is really that, you know, well, I need, you know, but for that, I couldn't get this project done. But then you also have the other side of that, which is, you then have to have twenty thousand dollars worth of eligible expenses that are under that, under that statute. So if you, if you aren't doing, if your project doesn't have any of those eligible expenses, it doesn't matter how much of an increment you create, you can't use it for it. So there's really both sides of the equation.
And that's why remodels are often difficult to really utilize for TIF. And typically, when, with Jonathan Jenk, when he has projects, he's talking to people, if it's a more of a remodel, we, he, he would typically steer them towards LB eighty-fourty as a resource, whereas if you're doing new construction, typically, it's the cause of demolition and other factors that make the project cost prohibitive, and then TIF would make more sense, so.
I think the last TIF project we did, it was in April, and honestly, it was similar to what you had discussed. And I think the TIF ended up being twenty thousand dollars, and, you know, with all the, with whatever eligible, um, of projects that could be done. So, we, we, we're not doing a ton of TIF, we see a few a year maybe?
Yeah.
And so, it's not like, you know, people are breaking down the door to the TIF projects.
It's not a, it's not, it's not the end of financing, I mean, it is, it is the last gap. You have to have a, you know, you have to have all your financing, your project has to look, look pretty fully formed, and just, and you're just a, a, I mean, a little more complicated, but you know, a little short on financing, otherwise, otherwise, you know, TIF is not going to, is not going to finance a project.
It's a tool, it's a toolbox, that's it.
Are you going to have that map up, can we pull it on the screen?
I'm trying to get it, it doesn't seem to be cooperating with today.
Well, let me know when you're there, yes.
Hey, Andrew, is it possible to, uh, become upside down in the TIF? Where, because all these estimates are made upfront. And so is it possible to become upside down, where I'm TIF eligible for, let's choose simple numbers, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm TIF eligible for a thousand dollars, but when it's all said and done, I, I got the thousand dollars to start my project and did it, but when everything's said and done, and the appraisals are done, the tax increment is only five hundred dollars, so I'm backwards.
That happens, that happens, yep. And, 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 and really, I mean, from the city's perspective, all the city is doing is the CRA is agreeing to pass through that incremental tax. If, if it's short, then.
The project owner's still responsible.
The project owner's responsible for it. Um, the, where I thought you were going with that, so I'm going to, I'm going to go there as well, is the other, the other thing that's happened, and I've seen, this, and this does not happen very often compared to, I mean, again, we're doing projections at the beginning of projects, but it can be off, or, or they could build it slightly different, or, you know, the assessor could come in different, and so that happens. Um, the other thing that could happen is that you, you know, you have a thousand dollars of TIF, and you think you have a thousand dollars of TIF eligible cost, and all of a sudden, your bids are better, and you only have eight hundred dollars of eligible costs. Well, you don't get to use all thousand dollars, you only get to use eight hundred dollars of it.
That was a good point you thought you were going to make.
Yeah, I knew that's where you were going next.
Mr. Mayor, can I finish my last question?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, go ahead, and then if you have questions.
Just one comment.
And if there's other questions, we can always call Andrew back up, so go ahead, take your time.
Okay, one of the things I want to say is, I want to see Seward grow. I want us to be ten thousand people in the next fifteen years. We are a vibrant, growing city, how did we get to this point? I mean, I don't want us to ever get back to the point where we're looking at more and more broad, blighted property. Let's get proactive and take a look at what got us here, and take a look at maybe some of the ordinances that aren't strong enough, and give Ed or the city the tools to get to that point. So, twenty-five years from now, forty years from now, we're not in the same position of saying, we have this blighted property, because we're ignoring some of the issues with development and housing and so forth, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew, is there any other questions for Andrew? If not, it's time, you can always call him back up later if you think of something. Anyone else from the public wish to come up on this item? Welcome.
Did I step in front of you?
No, you're fine, it's fine.
With no disrespect intended to the owner, he spent twenty minutes having to go through the rules of defining this blight study, when he could have said we've got four properties and they're all in really bad shape, we need to blight it.
And Gary, can you just state your name and address?
My name is Gary Rolfe.
Thank you.
Four oh four Lincoln Street. I work in a local bank. I work in a local bank, and nothing I say.
Yeah, one second, Gary, can you get that turned on? Well, there's feedback, and they could, you're good, okay, go ahead. Oh, no, never mind, hang on. Do you know what that's coming from, Ed?
You okay now?
Yeah, we'll let you know, there is some, the speakers are giving some feedback, some people behind you couldn't hear, but, but, um, yeah, I think go ahead, and if you need to stop, if the problem persists, we'll come back. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say like I did last night, we're all friends here, we socialize together, please don't take anything anybody says tonight personally. Okay, we all, we all live in this community, and we all want what's best. I'm going to go ahead and read this, last night I got off track and just went off, and so I'll just start at the beginning here and just read through it. You all have copies, um, so you can follow along if you like. This issue was stymied at the planning convention last night, is indeed only about TIF. In case you're going out on a charter, terrorist over blighted residential houses. Uh, just four, and I'm talking about Seward, or three, uh, just four mine, surrounded by nice homes. The blight study is being used as a tool to achieve a means to enhance the building apartments on this nice stretch of road, or building apartments on this nice stretch of road seen by thousands of visitors or residents annually, that to me is not, not a good idea. Tonight, you will need to take a thoughtful look at this intended use of TIF, its scope, because that's what we're really talking about, and what we would define as improved in the context of this setting here with these four houses. I submit that an apartment building, even though the entire eight blocks adjacent to it, and that's just an estimate, is owned for it, are for, it's not an improvement, as, as someone would define, and that's subjective, everybody has their opinion on what that means. We have a nice row of houses beginning at the turnoff of Highway thirty-four all along North Columbia that provide a very nice first impression for anyone driving the street, especially those visiting our nice town. Think about all those Concordia parents considering leaving money to the college based on goodwill that our town has provided. The view is exceptional, and it's rare, I'll add that. To submit, I submit this is a case of an owner letting property deteriorate, and the city has done nothing to remedy the problem except in this late hour. Yes, something that needs to be done, this blight study and the following outcome is one solution, but it's being couched in the argument that the city needs to step in, that other options have been exhausted or are not viable, and that's hogwash. We already have two very large TIF districts in town for that very purpose, to attract new business. What we have here is the exact opposite of business owners seeking to develop, seeking TIF funding as his goal. First, but first we have to blight. This is the counter to the entire process of attracting building development, and the city would be complicit if they allowed this to take place, using the blight designation as an excuse for action. What would be best for these four properties? The owners either fix them, or put them up for sale, and the property sold on the free market. The new owners would either repair or replace them and use them for their intended use where they were built, single-family residences in what was once a single-family residence neighborhood. Study cites some complaints, I think two or three, starting in September. Study bases, some of its concluded on repairable problems with front porches and pillars and railings, and some cracks in the sidewalk, along with the population drop from eighty to seventy-three, and the average age of the sample of houses over forty years old, really. It's not statistically significant if you've had any kind of statistics training, to go from eighty to seventy-three. And age is actually a bonus if you look at the houses in the sample size. Look at the nicer, a hundred-year-old homes north of these properties. So the study is contrived, and I'll just add, you had to conclude it was blighted, then planning commission had to go with it, because it's laid out just like, like, like it says. However, the study was contrived, but it's not being used as law was intended to be followed. Building age in context is supposed to be covering old office buildings, downtown retail stores and factories, not houses. This isn't what they had in mind, a sample size of four residences in a nice neighborhood, not old buildings in a, in a, in a business district. To accept that finding is a huge stretch and a scary precedent. The argument that repair is not feasible, and that the city needs to step in is also hogwash. The blight designation is designed and intended to be a last resort to save a section of town, not allow development of one parcel to make a developer happy. Where's the value in that to the city? The question is value. Anyone owning this property needs to comply with city code for livability. So these four properties will take a lot of work to get fixed up, and therein lies the rub. Where are they worth now, and what would it take to repair to bring them up to code? That's for the owner and any potential buyer to decide, based on the code violations remaining. These homes are currently under the scrutiny of the building department at the city. They need to be fixed or demolished for sure. Sold at the right price, they can either be repaired or rebuilt. That's the remedy here, and the city has the power to affect this change. So far, it has been unwilling to do so, and that's because you have a complaint-driven program, instead of just going out and identifying properties and dealing with it when you know there's violations. Like, I use the first and Jackson house as an example, there's a homeowner roof on the south side of that roof, it's been there since I moved here eight years ago. Tony Veronica couldn't sell his house to a single-family homeowner, homeowner, because of that house next door, and that's subjective, and that's my judgment, but I'll bet you it's true. Now a renter bought it, landlord bought it, and was renting it out. Now you have a scapegoat developer in hand, I suggest you let him off the hook. And if he needs TIF dollars for a project, go find an appropriate place in an established blighted area, not our neighborhood and not in this street. I'll even pick up a hammer and help him, as you all know, I'm capable of doing improvement. Single-family residences are what keep neighborhoods intact and inviting. The folks, there's a typo here, this word, owning that house across from the apartments at Fourth and Lincoln Street, listed their house this last summer for sale. It didn't sell. One prospect, a buying prospect, provided insight as to why. When they said they didn't appreciate all the cars parked in the street, apartment tenants parking in front of this house. Who will buy it? A swim lord will, and the neighborhood decayed, cancer continues. Additionally, rental owners have a bad reputation in this town for allowing homes to fall apart. I'm digressing here, but just allow me to say this. Why isn't some, why isn't there some kind of an inspection program? Kind of like what Hovin was alluding to. Homeowners are trying to preserve home value, and the city code is designed to protect that value. The city's failure here is contributing to the cancer spread. You want to protect the neighborhood, enforce code, but also provide a means for homeowners with demonstrated need to maintain their homes, and look into that. I've taken action to demonstrate what can be done by putting my money where my mouth is and saving Fred Redmond's house for him and his brothers this past year. I organized a volunteer effort to get a much-needed painting and front porch repaired. It can be done, and I'll acknowledge the Habitat for Humanity folks and the folks at the E3 church. That project was all done by free labor and volunteers, and somebody was willing to pay a thousand bucks for the paint. And the rest came out of Fred's pocket. There were no, no handouts here other than just volunteer labor. It can be done. He was not forced to sell, and the fire department did not get to practice yet another practice burn. This was my form of righteous anger, not my original thought, but I like it. Because I hated looking at that old house in the condition it was in. And I liked the owner telling, trying to sell the three condos, and I had the time in my life would disagree. Don't accept the study. This is a picture-postcard street, and to destroy the view in the name of improvement is extremely unwide and shows a lack of leadership. This is a job looking for money, seeking taxpayer involvement as a bailout. This study is flawed due to the inappropriately selected small sample size. Be mindful of the outcome should you accept it. You will need to put some value in our, what our streets look like, not just the bottom dollar. And this is in bold. Listen up. You are leaders charged with the awesome responsibility to make decisions based on what's best for the town. Policy decisions are never easy. You wake up at four o'clock in the morning worrying about ramifications of your vote. I know that happens. You're, you all have what's best in mind, yet you must hear from the constituents. I have given you a piece of my mind and what I'm thinking. I hope you will give my opinion serious consideration based on discussions with fifteen neighbors in the immediate surrounding vicinity of this property last week. With the exception of one who really doesn't care either way, think that this is the wrong way to go without getting taxpayers involved, or violating taxpayers' involved. Make the owners repair, demolish, or sell. That's your job to enforce housing code components. That doesn't cost a taxpayer anything. I should finish with, I started saying this when I got thrown off. I'm sorry. I work at a local bank. Nothing I say, uh, gives a view of the bank. I do own a kettle corn business, and everything I said, that kettle corn business endorses, so.
Any questions for Gary? See none, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Welcome.
To sign in.
Yes, yes, make sure you sign in.
Good evening, members of the city council, mayor's staff, and people that are here from the community. Have a whole written amount of things I'd like to say. I live twenty-five, seventy-seven Way, where they roll it. My name is Mark Colterman. I've had the opportunity to serve in the legislature for the last four years. I think the attorney tonight did a really nice job of, of laying out the definition of blighted and substandard. And I can tell you as a member of the legislature, we spend a lot of time looking at definitions with my colleagues and the business communities, builders, developers. There have been some communities in our state that have stretched the definition from time to time or misrepresented the meaning of, of blighted, substandard, things of that nature. And I'm not here tonight to make a suggestion of what you do. I'm here tonight more than anything to educate you as to the tools that are available to you and how they're used in other communities, and tell you why the legislature passed laws to allow for this type of financing. Tax increment financing. I grew up on that street. I grew up at one forty Lincoln Street. My neighbor Rick Indica grew up at one-ten Lincoln Street. Knew the owner of the properties very well. Probably know more about that area than anybody in this room, other than maybe Sam. And I could tell, I could tell you a lot of stories about that area. But as I look at the properties, Hovin said it very well, the properties run down. It needs to be fixed. Tax increment financing is just a tool. And to say that it's not blighted, how could you say that's not blighted, substandard? I mean, the developer, the person that's looking to buy the property and develop it, had to pay somebody to come in and do that development study. It's no, there's not one person in this room that's involved in that. That, there's a reason for that. There's gotta be a third party that does that type of blighted study. And, you know, I've heard, I've heard comments in this community about the blighted, substandard designation being used to, to, to put down a neighborhood. That's not the case at all. That's not, that's not the intent here. I can tell you in the last, you know, there's been questions about, should we be using this for housing? Every year for the last four years, there's been a bill about TIF. I think Americans substantiate that. And it's a very controversial issue. And there's some people that are dead set against it because you are giving a tax increment. And, and it's a last resort type of increment to make a project go. But I can tell you, last year, somebody just asked me recently from the community, is this really what the legislature intends? To use it for housing? Well, last year, as you heard, four forty-nine was a bill that was passed. I supported that bill. Because when we look around our communities, our state needs to grow. If we don't have growth in our communities, we can't pay for the things that we want. A town that doesn't grow is a town that's gonna die. And so one of the tools that we try to make available are things like TIF, TIF. And, and, and so last year, we, we debated for many hours the value of TIF as it comes to housing. Affordable housing. And I can tell you that that bill passed thirty-three to sixteen. So two-thirds of the body said, it's necessary. And the person linking the charges was Scotts Bluff, and the other one was from the Broken Bowery. Gothenburg. So there's a need for this type of funding. There's a need for this tool in the toolbox. The thing that people have to realize, this, this, this particular four houses is in an area that's fallen into bad dis, disrepair. It is appropriate. Not only is it appropriate, but it's a great opportunity that somebody would want to come in and infuse a lot of capital into our community. Designating this area blighted and standard does several things. It will draw additional redevelopment to the area. And it could help us eliminate other dilapidated, unsafe structures. But we're not here to talk about that, but that's a possibility as a result of this. It opens up an area for new housing. One of the biggest challenges that we face in the state is we don't have hous, we don't have affordable housing for people to move into. So it fills a, a need in any community where they're gonna use this. I think eventually, contrary to what Mr. Rolfe just said, it would, it would, it would be a better first impression for guests visiting Seward and Concordia. I, I agree that when you drive down Columbia Avenue, it's beautiful. Till you get to that corner, and there's four houses there that, that are in disrepair. And again, I think it also paves the way for an improved tax base. Tax increment financing, it's not like you're not gonna collect taxes on that money. Because you're gonna get it all. You're just gonna have to wait to get it all. But, but as the attorney said, there's a base. That doesn't go away. That base still gets paid. So the difference is, whether it's up to fifteen years, you're gonna, somebody's gonna collect money for the bonds that are sold. And I know I'm talking too long, but the bonds that get sold, somebody's gonna have to pay back that interest on those bonds. And that money comes back into the community because a lot of times your local institutions buy those bonds. Sometimes the developer buys the bonds. They, they have to pay taxes on that money, and it comes back into the community. So it is, it's, it's a great opportunity to grow. Another thing that I want to just point out to you is, it's right next to Concordia. So to say that this doesn't fit the area, there's dorms all, there's dorms all along Lincoln Street, or along that whole area in there. Right across the street, there's two dorms. If he builds this thing, and, and you put students in there, instead of having Concordia build a dorm and take it off the tax rules, this goes on the tax rules. And the owner's gonna have to pay taxes on it, just, and, and whoever rents it's gonna end up paying, help pay those taxes. So there's, there's a whole bunch of opportunities here that I think we need to look at. But again, it's a decision you have to make. Are you willing to use the tools that we give you from the legislative perspective to the advantage of the community? It's not gonna affect, it's, it probably will bring property values up for the neighbors. Because they're gonna see, they're gonna see increased valuation. And eventually, you're gonna have taxes paid on maybe four million instead of two hundred thousand. We need that in our communities. I think the last thing I want to talk about is, I never met Thomas Caton till this, this weekend. He sought me out this weekend. We visited a little bit. We got a young man here who wants to move back to our community, raise a family, invest in the community substantially. I, I look around this room, there's a lot of young people other than Dean and I mean there on this council. That's positive for me. If we're gonna have people come back to our communities, we have to work with them. We don't want to throw up red flags to them all the time and say, hey, this isn't for us. If we're gonna grow our state, we've gotta have affordable housing, we've gotta have young people coming back. And so I would, I, I would submit to you, you have to make the decision, number one, is it blighted? And then finally, you won't have anything to do until somebody comes in and tells you what qualifies for TIF. And every TIF project has to stand on its own merit. So why, that's why you created a separate board to make the decision what's gonna qualify and how much you're gonna grant for TIF. If it doesn't work, Thomas has got a lot of money invested, and, you know, he might, he might not gain a thing. But again, it's a tool that's been made available to every community in this state. A lot of them use it. It's not been used in Seward, but there's a lot of small towns that have used it. And, and affordable housing is only available for class-two and class-one cities. That tells you that's for only rural Nebraska. So with that, I try to answer any questions you might have. I'm not here to, people have specific ideas about, is TIF good for your community or is it? I don't like the idea of taking a piece of farmland and TIF in it. That's a whole different issue. But in this particular case, it probably fits, it probably fits a lot better than anything I've seen that's been useful in Seward, Nebraska. So with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Senator Colterman? I think you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Welcome.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Thomas Caton. I am managing partner at Plexomes LLC, the entity that is under contract with these four properties. And we also paid for the blight study to be completed on the properties in question tonight. As I've said before, I, I was born and raised in Seward and graduated from Seward High School in two thousand fourteen. I then went to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I've been very blessed and currently own and operate a company called Tractor Math. And co-in a construction real estate company that's based out of Seward. I'm also getting married this May, and we will live at eleven nineteen Aguestini Drive, Seward. At the October city council meeting, in which you guys voted eight to zero to allow the city to con, conduct a blight study on these reported properties, as Andrew stated earlier, RDG, the company that the city selected to conduct the study, did conclude that these properties aren't considered blighted and should be added to the current blight map. Although I got the opportunity to speak with many of you regarding our plans about cleaning up this area and developing it to the best use of its R4 zoning, tonight is about voting if these properties should be added to the current blight map. With that being said, I ask you city council members to concur with the findings of RDG and vote yes to extend Seward redevelopment area. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Thomas. Any questions? Sid?
Thomas, could you give us just kind of a, relate to us the timeline of, because I've, I've not really been able to piece it together based upon what I've read, you know, like in the complaint reports and whatnot. The timeline of how you got to the point as a prospective developer of not only selecting these properties, but then how or who, how you got to the point where you then decided that you may want to use TIF financing through the blighted process?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, we, we just got done with our first project in Seward. We built six townhomes on Aguestini Drive there in Seward. And soon after starting that project, I started looking for the next project here in Seward, knowing that there is a, a large need for different types of housing in Seward, and so, you know, something that my partner and I really wanted to look into was multifamily, and I'm sure as many of you guys know, there isn't an abundance or actually any R4-zones lots or land really available in Seward, so the only opportunity for a developer like myself to put an apartment up is to find infill lots. And so that's, that's exactly what I did, is I started searching for different infill opportunities. I, you know, this wasn't the only property that, that we looked at. The reason why we, we decided to stick with this property was because it is right across from Concordia. It is on a, a main road in Seward. And, you know, it, it was basically the only property, again, we're, the only opportunity we had was for infill opportunities, and so, you know, this was an opportunity where, you know, we had two sellers, we had a brother and sister, and, and that they were willing to sell all four properties to us, and so rather than like the other properties we were looking at where you could only get maybe a third of an acre or half an acre, you know, or at most, at this point, we were able to, to, to get upwards of one point six acres, which then allows us to put potentially three apartments on this, on this piece of ground, so.
And then how'd you become aware of the TIF, the process and the blighting?
Yeah. So, you know, what, like Senator Colterman said, I mean, you know, TIF's a, a tool that the state, the city, I mean, you know, provides for developers, you know, it gives an incentive for someone like myself to come in to Seward and develop. And so I've worked very closely from the beginning with Seward Economic Development Chair Jonathan Jank, and so, Um, and so I've worked very closely in the beginning with the Seward Economic Development Chair, Jonathan Jake, and so, um, again, he explained, I didn't, I was very naive to TIF at the beginning, um, but once I figured out that the only opportunity to put multifamily in Seward was infill opportunities, um, you know, that was, I, 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 I became, I, I started researching the tool, um, and realized that this was the only way that I could make the project work, um, since, you know, we're not able to just take a clean lot, we're actually having to go in, um, buy a, a piece of property, um, that has structure on it, and we actually, actually go to the expense to tear those down. Um, and so that's why I felt like, you know, um, you know, the city provides that tool for a reason, and so I felt like this would be an appropriate use.